All right, I want to officially welcome you to the city of Ferndale. My name is Dave Coulter and tonight I will be sworn in as Ferndale's 17th Mayor.[11.11][11.11](APPLAUSE). If you're with us here in person, you know this, but in case you're watching on television or on the Internet, we had a reception immediately preceding the meeting and we called it the Mayor's Reception and we were honored with some special guests, some very special guests, and that is the former mayors of Ferndale. And I asked them to come back and be with us and with me here this evening, in part because I'm a student of history and I think it's important to remember where we've been and especially in these challenging times that we face right now. It can be a little overwhelming. We have a full plate on our agenda, but I think it should give us comfort to remember that each of these leaders faced their own challenges and they surmounted them successfully and they helped lay the foundation for the city that we have today. And so, they did it and we can do it and that's why I am so honored that you are here. And so, I would like to introduce you one at a time and have you come up and help me do the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting if you don't mind. And so, I'd like to start with, and I'm not sure what the Charter says officially, but our Mayor Pro Tem has led the city for the last month since our former mayor resigned to become the county commissioner. And I want to recognize her for her months of service, okay?[92.82][92.82](APPLAUSE). Mayor Pro Tem Baker.[95.11][95.11](APPLAUSE). And she replaced, as you know, our former mayor Craig Covey, who served from 2008 to 2010 and on council before that. Mayor Covey.[113.36][113.36](APPLAUSE). And now, our county commissioner, as I think you know her.[120.11][120.11](APPLAUSE). Before Craig Covey was mayor, Mayor Bob Porter served our city for three terms from 2002 to 2008. Thanks, Bob. Before that, also a three-term mayor and a political mentor of mine and a friend who I'm so glad is here tonight, our former mayor and current district court judge Chuck Geterd.[151.69][151.69](APPLAUSE). And his robe should give you a hint of what his next assignment is tonight. And finally, preceding Chuck as mayor of Ferndale, Ferndale's first woman mayor and the only elected female mayor Pamela McCullough.[173.12][173.12](APPLAUSE). Thank you so much for coming. I do want to acknowledge three mayors who are still living, thank goodness, but were unable to make it here this evening. And I would just like to mention that Rob McGee, Mayor Bob McGee, a lot of you may know, lives in Ann Arbor now and had a prior commitment. Al Gertley lives in the state of Washington now with his family and couldn't make it. And back from 1973 to 1979, Bob Paskowski, Mayor Paskowski was the mayor. He's living in Warren. He wasn't able to make it here, but I want to, I want to recognize and thank them for their leadership as well.[215.12][215.12](APPLAUSE). So, mayors, if you'll do me the honor of helping me to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with never seen justice before.
I will now administer the oath of office upon which please say, "I do." Raise your writing.[275.33][275.33](LAUGHTER). "I, David W. Coulter, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of this state, and the Charter of the city of Ferndale, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor in and for the city of Ferndale, county of Oakland, and state of Michigan to the best of my ability."
I do.
Now, the hard part is he has to sign his name.[331.62][331.62](LAUGHTER).
All right, and with that, it is my privilege to call to order the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 14th, 2011, Valentine's Day at 7:36. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Council Mayor Pro Tem Baker, supported by Councilman Galloway. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That motion passes. This morning, this evening, we have four presentations and I believe our police chief is going to take care of the first several of them for this. Our chief, police commendations and citizens award this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's Council. Again, in keeping with the tradition, our new tradition of our officers that have received and citizens that receive commendations, we would like to do that publicly at city council meetings this evening. Many officers from our agency as well as from the Hazel Park Police Department and the Detroit Police Department have been invited to this event, but unfortunately, most of them apparently had commitments to Valentine's Day and some other things. We do have one of our citizens here, I'll be getting to her in a moment, Ms. Meredith Morgan, who is in the audience tonight. Apparently, she doesn't have a Valentine, so we want to be her Valentine today.[462.03][462.03](LAUGHTER). Our first award is for Officer Timothy Andre on an incident that occurred in March of last year. Officer Andre responded to the Citco gas station on West Nine Mile, the person that had fallen down. When they arrived, they discovered the person was in cardiac arrest. He arrived and began CPR on the individual, assisted by the fire department. That individual was trapped, where they obtained a pulse and they transported that person to the hospital, where the hospital personnel and the firefighters both commended Officer Andre for his quick action, which resulted in the saving of a human life. And they believe that, and that person is now out of the hospital and is in completely good health. So, Officer Tim Andre will be receiving a life-saving award. Many of these awards are, you hear some gunshots and good police work and stuff, but many of these, this award is one of the ones that's new and true to their heart. They really appreciate the fact because to get this award, they've actually have to have saved someone's life. So, we congratulate Tim on that. The second incident.[531.16][531.16](APPLAUSE). The second incident occurred a couple of days before Christmas. If I could have Ms. Meredith Morgan come up to the, to the front here for us. I learned tonight that Ms. Morgan is a dispatch supervisor for the city of Southfield, so she's one of our own. This is an interesting case in which Ms. Morgan observed a suspicious vehicle, thought quickly, called the police department. Officers responded. We had Sergeant Steven Jennings, Sergeant Shane Patak, Lieutenant Brian Chikowsky, Lieutenant William Wilson, Officer John Heath, Officer Jeff Pierce, Officer Tim Andre again, Detective John Tholl, Detective Simpson, dispatcher Perry, Hazel Park Police Officer Lowry, Detroit Police Officer Zajak, and Detroit Police Officer McDonald. They all responded to this call of a suspicious vehicle that had fled when Officer Heath saw it. Ultimately, this vehicle was stopped. The occupants escaped the vehicle and they ran into the neighborhoods in the city of Detroit. These officers cordoned off the area. They worked very well together. They got a K-9 out there. They found these three individuals and they arrested them that they had just committed a home invasion on Allen Street. That may not warrant such a big fanfare of congratulations, except that these three individuals, once they were arrested and interrogated and subsequently confessed to a whole string of break-ins that occurred not only in the city of Ferndale, the north section of Detroit, Oak Park, Hazel Park, and it broke up a huge ring of home invasions that we have been suffering for some time. So, we have not experienced those, those type of crimes in that area, in that significance. Again, we've cleared up many of these, these break-ins and without the action of Ms. Meredith, with Ms. Morgan here, I don't think that we would have caught these, these individuals. So, we really appreciate her assistance and we did provide her with a certificate.[662.73][662.73](APPLAUSE). And the last one I have here, this just occurred on the 27th of January, we kind of snuck this one in on the city clerk, but again, many of the same officers, Sergeant Jennings from the day shift, Officer Carroll, Officer Pierce, Officer Schwartz, and Officer Andre. Yet again, this is a very interesting case because our 911 system, many times we pick up, when you call on a wireless call, we many times, even if you're in the city of Detroit, it will, the phone call will come to the Ferndale Police Department. And on this date, we received a 911 call from the city of Detroit. An individual saw three or four men walk into the gas station on the Detroit side of Eight Mile and Livernoy. They believed one of them had a gun. We forwarded that information over to the Detroit Police Department. Of course, when we did that, our officers heard that and they can't contain themselves as they'd all rush over there. And long story short, these officers not only arrested three of the four individuals prior to the arrival of the Detroit Police Department, they then assisted in the fourth that barricaded himself in the bathroom with a Tech 9 semi-automatic pistol and they were able to extract that man from that bathroom. And bottom line was, his four bad guys went to jail and nobody got hurt. So, all of those officers are also commended by the Ferndale Police Department.
Thank you, Chief. The next order of business is a presentation from the Regional Energy Office. Is there someone here from the Regional Energy Office? Yep, there we are. Thanks. Come on up to the mic and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Amanda Dentler. I'm the outreach director for the Regional Energy Office for the Better Buildings for Michigan program.
Good evening, Council and public. I'm Phil Hadley, the administrator for the Better Buildings Program in southeast Michigan.
First of all, we'd like to say congratulations, Mayor Coulter.
Thank you.
It's a great night to be presenting here. So, we're here today to give a close-out report for the Better Buildings for Michigan program that was in Ferndale from October until January. First of all, we would like to thank all of the officials in the city for their support of this program, particularly Melanie Piana, who helped bring the program to Ferndale. We also want to thank the public, who without their participation, we wouldn't have gotten the report that follows.
And I think two of us actually participated in. Our homes were in the district, myself and Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
So, thank you both for participating and for supporting it. So, a total of 403 homes were in the neighborhood. Of those, 91 homes were completed. That's about a 20% uptake, which is a success for us because Ferndale was the first neighborhood in the nation to do this project. And they actually were about average with the rest of the cities nationwide that did that. So, we don't want to say that Ferndale is average. You're definitely above average, but as far as the trends in this program, it was right on point. So, congratulations for that. We do want to say another success of this visit or of this sweep was that the governor, then Governor Grantholm came to kick it off at a state level. So, that was a very big honor to have her here in Ferndale. As we exit the community, we still plan to support Ferndale's plans for greening the communities and to support it to be a more sustainable city. So, we will have a person from the Regional Energy Office as point person for the program as we leave. And anyone who is not in the neighborhood and didn't or missed it, there are still a lot of resources available to you to learn how to make your home more energy efficient if you go to regionalenergy.org. And we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from Council? Thank you so much. Very exciting program. Glad that Ferndale got to kick that off.
Glad I got to.[914.13][914.13](LAUGHTER).[915.13][915.13](APPLAUSE).
Our next presentation, I believe Stephanie Hall from our public schools, Ferndale Public Schools is here for a presentation. Stephanie.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
For those who don't know me, I'm Stephanie Hall. I'm Director of Community Relations for the Ferndale Schools and I appreciate this opportunity every month to come in and share news about our district. I have not my own business card, but I have a card here that anyone here in the audience can pick up and log in to receive our weekly newsletter. The news that I share with you is also shared weekly via the Internet. It's on our homepage, the first thing that you can click on when you go get there. And we send it out to about 4,000 people every week, district families, but also elected officials and community members as well. Some of the things that I want you to know are going on, and the first point of pride I want to point out to you is our thanks for attendance of three of your members at our community breakfast that we held at the beginning of the month. It was the best attended we have ever had and I think mostly, I want to give credit to partnering with the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce. We had a tremendous turnout, standing room only, and I actually shared my newspaper with someone who was here earlier from Congressman Levin's office. He came and greeted our students and spoke to the group, but the observer put it in Sunday's paper with some great pictures. So, I had that to share with you, but I gave it to his office staff so she can share it with him. But I always appreciate seeing you all there and having the chance to have our students meet members of the community and tell their stories. And just one I want to point out, as a Ferndale resident, Jordan Haynes, he spoke to the group that night. He's been accepted to MIT where he'll be studying computer engineering. And he credits his experiences at Ferndale High School on the robotics team and as the drum major for the marching band with preparing him for MIT and also for getting their attention when he made his application. So, he's, he's one of our standouts and we wanted you to know about him. We have a couple of events coming up that I want to make sure that the community is aware of. On Wednesday of this week, we'll be hosting a kindergarten roundup event at Grant Early Childhood Center. Starts at 5:30 with pizza. If you know anyone in the community who has a next-year kindergartner, please share with them that this is an opportunity to meet Kennedy Principal Diane Shepik and Roosevelt Principal Dina Kraus and to find out about enrolling. We have general enrollment at Roosevelt and we also have a magnet lottery. That lottery deadline is February 28th every year, so this is a key time for us to get that word out. So, I wanted to share that with you. Again, that's Wednesday. We've got news just recently that Roosevelt Primary School is the winner of a 2011 Michigan Schools of Character Award. That qualifies them to be sent on to a national competition that would qualify them as a national school of character, which we would find out in the spring. Roosevelt was recognized for their brain-smart start and their Big Brothers and University High School mentoring programs that they have in place there. You'll be hearing more from us about that. There'll probably be a new sign on the edge of the building too, pretty soon. Couple of things that are also coming up. We have an alumni basketball night this Thursday, February 17th. Ferndale High School is going to be playing Berkeley, which is a big rival night, but they've invited all the alumni to come back to the game. So, again, if you know alumni, please pass that word along to them. The game starts at 7:00 PM on Thursday. There are a couple of other events. These are big fundraisers for our district organized by different organizations that support different themes. University High School's parent group is sponsoring a bowling fundraiser on February 21st. The Fine Arts Booster, also known as the Fab, are hosting their third Taste of Music on February 24th called Music of the Green. They have performers who perform Irish music and they'll have Irish themes throughout the night and that promises to be a fun, a fun night. Another big event is March 24th, is the Ferndale Education Foundation. This is their biggest fundraiser of the year. They are raffling off a car and it's going to be held at Boogie Fever. And then, we also have for our, for families in our district, we just want to get the word out, middle schoolers, sixth graders who will be middle schoolers next year will be able to go to quite a few different transition events. There will be visits by the principal to their schools. There will be open houses in the school and we have all of that information in our, in our website. Our current newsletter, which I've left at the back of the room of stack of them, has flyers for each of these events in them. So, the more detail is out there, it is all on our website. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Stephanie. Are there any questions or comments for Stephanie? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next, excuse me, the next item of business is our call to audience. And I noticed that we have a couple of, at least a couple of elected officials that I recognize in the audience and I'd like to give them the opportunity at the beginning of this time, if they would like to avail themselves. I see our new state Senator, Senator Vince Gregory is here. Thanks, Vince. If you'd like to.
Check in.
My former colleague on the county commission.
Yeah. And good evening, Council, Mayor, and the city administration. And just to say that also, special congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And as indicated, we used to serve together. We served together on the commission for four years and when the mayor was the, was the caucus chair, I was the vice chair. And then, on the caucus floor, we sat together for a good four years, so we got to know each other real well. Congratulations to you. You do well in the city here and the city will, will be, I'm sure, very appreciative of all the good work that you've put into this.
Thanks, Senator.
But again, my name is Vince Gregory. I'm a state senator and represent 14 communities and so we're trying to make the rounds at least to the councils in all these communities, which is a lot. But I wanted to just let you know that I do set on appropriations, the Senate Appropriations Committee and on appropriations I set on, Human Services and Community Health and State Police and Veterans Affairs. I also set on two standing committees, Families, Seniors, and Human Services, the Military Affairs, and Homeland Security. So, I would like to let you know that if you have any issues on those particular, on those particular committees, Community Health, Human Services, those are big committees. They, they take up a large part of the budget. I certainly would love to hear from you and love to be your advocate on those committees to be able to bring any issues forward. And I'm certainly aware of the cities and the issues that you have with regards to revenue sharing and of course, the school issues, the school aid fund and the current proposed transfer of the money. So, rest assured with the revenue sharing, very much opposed to losing any revenue sharing. We know how much it, it will hurt any communities. We know that police and fire are definitely, will definitely take a hit if there's a cut in revenue sharing. So, certainly fighting to make sure we maintain all the revenue sharing we can for the communities. So, with that, I'd just like to say that as everybody's probably heard, we will have a budget presentation presented by the governor this Thursday. We're having a coffee hour here in Ferndale at, and pardon me if I say it wrong, Cesano's Coffee, Coffee Roasters on.
Cesano. Cesano.
Cesano.
Cesano.
Cesano, okay. Cesanos. And we're having that at 10 o'clock on this upcoming Monday, 1737 East Nine Mile. So, anybody's interested in coming in and talking about the budget and expressing their views and giving us some ideas to take back, we'd more than, we'd more than happy to have those recommendations. So, thank you and thanks for the time. Look forward to seeing you at the next, a couple more of these council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any questions for Vince before we let him go?
Senator, the press has quoted the mayor's or the governor's budget as going to be like an atomic bomb hitting Lansing. What are you, you know, what's the talk relative to state shared revenue? Is that going to be eliminated or what's the word on the street?
The word on the street is they kept a lot of things close to the vest. They have not talked a lot about exactly what the specifics of the budget will be, but the word on the street is, is at least the conversation is, is that there's going to be a proposal to possibly eliminate revenue sharing or give you an incentive to do more for cities and communities to work together in order to maintain revenue sharing. In other words, shared services, there will be, we hear that there will be a big incentive to, to ask communities to share services with other communities in order to save their revenue sharing that they will be receiving.
And is there any talk about giving cities credit that are already doing that, like the city of Ferndale?
That is being, that's being talked about very loudly and we hear that that's something that the governor will probably address at his, when he presents his budget this Thursday. And if somebody insists on appropriations, I will be there. So, and as I said, we will be trying to get back to the community, let people know what's going on with the budget and what we hear. There will be a lot of things that will be said at the budget and there will be things that will be said outside of the budget. So, we'll try to get those things back too, so people will know where they stand at. But certainly feel free to give me a call after, if you hear, hear something that's of interest, a picture of interest, you want to find more about it, let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just recognize and acknowledge the Royal Oak Mayor, Mayor Jim Allison. Do you want to come up and say hello, Mayor? Love to hear you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate Mayor Coulter on, on his appointment. I've had the pleasure of, of having Mr. Coulter as my county commissioner. I lived in the section of North Ferndale that we call South Royal Oak.[1566.13][1566.13](LAUGHTER). And Dave has been my county commissioner for many, many years. I also want to congratulate the council for wise choice in choosing not only Mr. Coulter to be their mayor, but choosing Mr. Woland Weber to be their interim city manager. If the opinion of the mayor of the city of Royal Oak means anything to the residents of Ferndale, I do believe you folks are in good hands.
Thank you.
So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you very much.[1589.75][1589.75](APPLAUSE). All right, now, this is officially the part of our agenda that we call Call to Audience. Call to Audience is up to 30 minutes now and more time if needed at the end of the meeting. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes or less on any issue that is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address or write it on the sign-in sheet so that the city clerk has it.
Hi, my name's Keith Dalton, 3036 Horton, Ferndale. First, congratulations, Dave, and welcome to our city manager. We have a big challenge coming ahead of us here with our millage proposal that we're going to be talking about. The other day, I was very perplexed when I was emailed a blog that was, I guess, posted by Mr. House. And on his blog, and I quote, he says, "Almost $1 million on two items. That is only for the new software, $438,411 we needed, although this old stuff would have worked fine and could have been used, and for office furniture, $447,930 for one councilwoman's office." That's what it says in the blog. And I just want all the citizens of Ferndale to realize that, for one, let me just note, none of the council members have an office and the mayor doesn't have an office. I believe the only people who have offices here are our city manager and our finance director, which both make perfect sense to me.
Our clerk as well.
Oh, and, oh, I'm sorry, and you too, right. I'm sorry. But, you know, and so, this kind of thing, we have to be guarded against in this debate that either through willful ignorance or just plain out lying, trying to get people's emotions, because that $447,000 or whatever also included not just furniture and carpet, but a new elevator and a complete renovation upstairs, electrical, Internet, and all that. And to willfully leave all that out and to imply that we spent that much money on just one person's office, we should have had our party tonight in that space, is all I can say.[1717.57][1717.57](LAUGHTER). Because for $447,000, it must be a heck of an office. But, so I just want everybody to know in our city that things are going to be said. All the information that is available about the budget is open to the public. Anything that you need to get, you can get from either the city manager, from any of the city council members, or from the county. So, do not just take these emotional motivations, people want to get you motivated to vote by your emotion instead of your intelligence. Figure this out because our country's in a crisis. We got there by people voting and doing things by emotion, like these wars that we're spending $2 billion a week on and all that. So, vote your, your brain, everybody, and not, don't get caught up in these emotions and these bomb-throwing things that are just plain untrue. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening.
Good evening. You might want to lower the microphone and we'll hear you better.
Good evening, councilmembers, and congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
My name is Yvonne Lee, 321 West Webster, Ferndale, Michigan. This is my second time coming before the council. My name is Yvonne Lee, 321 West Webster, Ferndale, Michigan. This is my second time coming before the council. This is my second time coming before the council because I received a ticket Monday, last Monday. Okay? I'm new to Ferndale, okay? Next month will be one year that I've lived in Ferndale. Right now, worst mistake I could've ever made, okay? I moved here, I'm disabled, I'm handicapped, I request a handicap poll. I was told, come down, fill out the form, you can get it. Did that, nothing. I was denied. Filled out a second form, I was denied, okay? I let it go, I let it go, 'cause it, it's stressing me out. I am a prisoner in my home and to receive a ticket because I had no notice or I did not know to move my vehicle for the snowplows to come down. No warning, no nothing. So how was I supposed to know? I have a letter here from my landlord to the mayor. It's three buildings in one, three units, okay?
Okay.
The person who's lived there the longest has access to the driveway. The other two tenants, parks on the street. So I'm on the street. I request a handicap poll because that street is very congested. It is. But I can't help that. You guys can't help that, but you could help me with getting that handicap poll where I don't have to leave my house, come back and be six to eight houses down from my house, walking with the assistance of a cane. I have fallen. I am fed up and the ticket just made matters worse.
So, so let me ask, because you were here before and I think this may have been referred to either the, um, the police chief, no, not, not there, the, and the city manager unfortunately is his first meeting. So if it went to the city manager's office, you don't know it, do you?
These guys wasn't, you know, and you weren't the mayor.
Right.
If her number is on the letter, um, we'll be happy to check and get back to her.
This is, uh.
That's what I was told. That's what I was told with the last mayor and council members. That's what I was told, haven't heard anything.
Could I ask you to put your phone number on here and I will have the city manager get in touch with you?
Sure.
Let's, let, is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah. I, I don't know.
And what is that, and what is that gonna, you know, I'm, next month will be a year that I've been here, been denied twice and no one has gotten in touch with me to the point of I got a $50 ticket that I have to go to court for now. That I have to go to court for and fight this ticket because where was I supposed to put the car up on my porch? You know?
Right.
So, I mean.
Yep, no, I, I apologize, but, um, we're, but we have a new manager and he's gonna look into it because the old manager left him a file of stuff. So we're gonna look into it, but we, if you give us your phone number, I guarantee you, we will call you and we will find out what, why you were denied and, and how we can rectify this.
Because the street is congested. I can tell you why, twice, not once, but twice. And just so much as last Monday with Officer Simpson, with Officer Simpson saying, "You have to be grandfathered in." There is a pole six houses down from me that was not there, okay?
Wait, um, let me, our DPW director, I'm just gonna look. I don't wanna put you on the spot at this. If you don't, not aware of this, just tell me, but he's stepping forward. So maybe he has some insight.
The city has a policy with snow removal that if four or more inches, uh, you have to take your vehicle off the street. All the streets are signed for that purpose. Uh, you can get a waiver, a permit that you can put on your car, uh, if you do not have a driveway approach, or if you can show that, uh, you are handicapped through the, you know, Michigan State licensing. So if you have a handicap sticker, uh, even though you might have a driveway or whatever, uh, you can get a permit from the DPW. And as long as you can show proof that you are legally entitled to a, a handicap parking sticker, uh, we will issue a sticker.
All right. Thank you.
So if she is interested.
Yeah. So, so we will have him get a, uh, get ahold of you, ma'am, okay?
Did that. Did that. Went there. Went to DPW. They told me because there's a driveway there, they cannot issue me the sticker.
All right. Well, you know what? We're not, we're not gonna debate it tonight. Um, we're gonna put you in touch with, with our DPW department.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it. I don't know how, I don't know what extent the conversation was or whatever, regardless of whether you have a driveway or not. If you are handicapped, you, you can get a permit. You just have to show proof that you are legally considered handicapped for parking in a handicap spot.
Okay? And if we don't do what we say, come back and tell us again. But I, well, you will be contacted, okay?
And what about the handicap poll?
Thank you. But, all right, so.
That part I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Handicap poll part I don't know.
We're gonna, we're, you're gonna talk to the DPW guy? He's the chief guy of, of that issue. And if you can't resolve it, come back and tell us, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Miss Lee. Thank you.
My name is Dennis, 766 Ferndale, Ferndale. Good evening, mayor. And once again, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
At the January 24th council meeting, the council brought up a parking meter issue. Councilwoman Piana was worried that the city was not charging for meters on an even basis. Well, she is right in a sense. If it is for a profit group blocking the meters, then charge them. If it's a nonprofit organization blocking the meters, don't charge them. My reason for this rationale is this. All the money that a profit group takes in goes in their pockets. All the money that a nonprofit takes in goes to charity, which brings me to the rip tent in the parking lot behind Dino's on February 5th. Dean Bosch was correct in stating that the extra people at that rip set off brought in more people on Saturday afternoon, even with the snowstorm we had. But it's not my point. My point is that for every dime in fees that you charge a nonprofit organization is money taken from a charity, in this case, the Ferndale Youth Assistance and the Midwest AIDS Foundation. Dean stated at the last meeting, in terms of these extra fees, he may not put that turn up next year. That he raised to the loss of the city, maybe $600 in parking meter fees. They lost to two benefit charities of approximately $8,000. Is it worth charging the fees on the meters to lose $8,000 for charity? I think not. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else for, um, call to audience this evening?
Dave, I just came down tonight, um, obviously for a get-together, but to thank you for your willingness to step forward. Um, Mayor McCullough, Mayor Covey, Mayor Getter, we all saw interesting times, whether it was financial, developmental, or whatever the case may be. But the one thing that's, that carried this city through each time is the character of the people in this community. And I just wanted to ask the people to get behind things. Dave, it's a new, it's a new beginning for you and for our city and for all the people to stand up, get behind you, do what they've done in the past, take Ferndale and continue to move us forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it. Appreciate your participation tonight. All right. Anyone else for call to audience? Then let's close call to audience. Uh, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All of these items are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. Public copies of the consent agenda were, can be viewed, not at the library, 'cause it's closed, but probably in the clerk's office, I'm guessing.
Absolutely.
Right? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, A, on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 24th, 2011, and the special meetings held January 24th and January 31st, 2011, is submitted by the city clerk. B, approval of resolution to adopt poverty exemption guidelines as submitted by the, the assistant city manager, finance director slash treasurer, the woman who wears many hats.
All in person.
Phew. Uh, C, acceptance of a bid from DHC for new exhaust removal systems at the fire headquarters at 1635 Livernoy and at Station 2, 1070 East Nine Mile, as stated in the bid. The total project cost for both stations, $32,378, to be paid 90% from an AFG grant award and 10% from the Public Improvement Fund, uh, 24800097, as submitted by the fire chief. Uh, consent agenda D, approval to exercise the option year 2012 of the street pavement repairs contract with the Hartwell Cement Company of Oak Park, as submitted by the DPW director. And E, approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to the review of the council finance committee. I would entertain a motion for all of those on the consent agenda unless someone would like something.
Move your consent agenda.
Moved by Councilman Levin, supported by Councilwoman Piana. Any discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Colton.
Uh, yes, that item passes. There's nothing on the regular agenda tonight. Did you guys purposely make this meeting easy for me? I, if so, I appreciate it. Uh, so the next item of business on our agenda is council liaison reports, uh, Eight Mile Boulevard Association, any update from that? The Michigan Suburbs Alliance, I'm guessing that's, that's you, councilwoman, but nothing tonight?
Nothing.
All right. Uh, the South Oakland Mayors Association, I actually do have something to report. I went to my first South Oakland County Mayors Association meeting, uh, last week. We heard a presentation from Kurt Metzger, the data guy, who told us about the census and when the numbers were coming back and how they're gonna impact communities like Ferndale. We expect that we're gonna lose some population here, but it's not quite clear yet. There's a lot of predictions about how much that will be, but we will know officially no later than March 31st what the census numbers will be. Uh, so stay tuned for that. Uh, I also asked the mayors if they were gonna teach me the secret handshake and they told me I had, I had to be a mayor for two months before they would show me. Uh, D, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, SMCOG.
I'm the liaison, but, um, I don't really have anything to report, other than I'm going to the executive board meetings, um, regularly. So, nothing to report out at the moment, that.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, E, Transportation Riders United. Who was that? I don't even know. Nothing to report from them. And finally, the Woodward Avenue Action Association, any reports from them?
The Woodward Avenue Action Association is the, is the home, um, for, want of a better term, um, for a group of elected officials, um, from the cities of between, basically between Ferndale and Birmingham, all, and all the cities in between, including Mayor Allison, who I think has already left us, um, that are working together to advocate for regional transit, um, between Eight Mile and 15 Mile. And Heather Carmona, the executive director of the Woodward Avenue Action Association, was recently on, uh, 2020 with Huel Perkins, so the, not the big 2020, the Detroit 2020. Um, and, and interview, uh, with, with, uh, Matt Cullen, who's working on the light rail in Detroit, and Heather Carmona, who is helping us advocate as elected officials in Oakland County, um, for transit to continue into Oakland County. Councilwoman Piana has been very involved in that. Um, and I know that that video is up on the Woodward Avenue Action Association's webpage.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, at this, at this time, uh, we're ready for call to council. I will start with our police chief. Police Chief Collins, anything further to report this evening?
Your honor, I would not even try to, uh, project this meeting any longer.
I thank you for that. Uh, Police Chief Sullivan, anything to report this evening?
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let's see, I see Jane Marie is still here. Anything to report this evening? All right. Thank you. And our DPW director, you've already been up once, but anything else to report, Byron?
No, uh, all the years I've been here, it's been the shortest meeting.
Well, that's, I, I will say, not to belabor it, but, but your department did a wonderful job during two snowstorms since the last meeting. In fact, the, the big storm, which wasn't as big as they predicted, but still was big enough. And you guys had all the streets plowed by 2 o'clock in the afternoon the day of the storm. Did a great job, uh, plowing our streets. Thank you. Um, city clerk, Sherlin, anything this evening?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
All right.
Except welcome.
Thank you. And our new interim city manager, Mark Wallen Weber. This is his first meeting as well this evening. Thanks, uh, for building here. Thank you for guiding us through this transition. Anything, uh, for us this evening, Mr. Wallen Weber?
Nothing extra.
Oh, wow, you guys really making this evening?
Is that great?
Yeah, right? Uh, city attorney, Dan Curtis.
Mayor, I have nothing further, other than to welcome and congratulations.
Appreciate it very much. Uh, Mayor Protown, Kate Baker.
Get, get two guys on their first day and we, yeah, it's okay with me. Um, congratulations, Dave, and welcome, Mark. And I look forward to, you know, probably Saturday afternoon phone calls with both of you sometime very soon and all the exciting budget business we'll be doing. So, thank you very much for your service.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Leonard, anything?
Uh, just welcome to Mark. Congratulations to you also. You stole a little bit of my thunder, but I was gonna thank Byron and the men and women of the DPW. Phenomenal job as always. Um, what did, I did discuss with our city manager earlier and I wanna bring it back up to the table. Uh, the qualifications that were listed for assistant city manager, was it, weren't?
It was for the assistant to the manager, I think.
Assistant to the manager. I wanted to look at those qualifications again. Um, I don't recall exactly what they were, but could you put them on the next agenda so we can talk about it a little bit?
Certain.
Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Piana.
Yes, I have a, a few things to talk about, but first, again, ditto, welcome, both of you. I'm very excited to have your leadership, um, at a pivotal time in, uh, in our city. Um, I also wanted to say, um, the individuals who helped with, um, interviewing our new community and economic development director, hasn't been announced yet, um, but it will sh, um, be shortly. And I wanted to say that we really did a unique, um, approach to, uh, interviewing our new candidates. And I wanted to thank Bob Bruner to, um, um, listening to some of my ideas about how to do it differently. What we did was we brought in our economic development partners to help do the interviews. So we brought in our MEDC representative, we brought in the economic development director of Oakland County, we brought in Eight Mile Boulevard Association, the DDA, and the Woodward Avenue Action Association. So the people that our community development director has to work with was interviewed by all of them. And we set up a relationship already for them to come into this community, knowing who the players are. And so I think you were on the interviews too. So thank you. Um, and if you could send her a letter of thanks to all of those individuals as well. I really appreciate it. And I'm very excited to have our new community development director start. I don't know when you're going to announce it, but I am just excited beyond belief. Um, my other announcement is Taste of Ferndale. Um, on May 6th, the Ferndale Community Foundation is having their annual Taste of Ferndale, um, held at Viennove, sorry, March 6th.
Thank you.
March, um, I knew it wasn't wrong. Um, March 6th, from 6 to 9 o'clock at Viennove. Tickets are $30 and the community foundation, um, provides money to other nonprofits to do, um, their great mission work inside our community. I am selling tickets, uh, for 30 bucks. So if you want to come and try all this great food, um, with over, I think, 15 restaurants in downtown Ferndale are coming.
It's March 8th.
Oh, sorry, man.
Tuesday, March 8th.
One last time, the day.
I know. I can't even, you know, blame it on a late meeting. Um, so it's Tuesday, March 8th, Mardi Gras, 6 to 9 o'clock. Um, so, uh, you can go to the Ferndale Community Foundation website to learn more information, or you can contact me through LinkedIn, Facebook, email, um, to get your tickets. So please come and, uh, hang out and try all this great food.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilman Galloway.
Uh, just to echo the sentiments previously expressed, uh, welcome, Dave, welcome, Mark. Um, this is probably the second or third remaking of Ferndale government that we're undergoing since my time up here on council. And I'm really excited about it. I think with the new, uh, CDS director, uh, or economic development, uh, director, new city manager, assistant city manager, new mayor, a lot of the exciting things and a lot of reasons to be positive, I think, about, uh, the future well-being of Ferndale. Um, so we're off to a good start this season.
Thank you. And finally, me. Uh, I just wanna, you, you've done a marvelous job of thanking me all night. I wanna thank all of you. I wanna thank, um, the mayors for gracing us and coming back to, to, to Ferndale. I very much appreciate it. I wanna thank my colleagues on, on council who appointed me. Uh, it was a big part of the reason I applied for this job was the, the opportunity to work more closely with you. And I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you very much. I have friends and family that are here. My parents are here. Thank you for coming. Uh, and friends and family. And I wanna thank all of you. Uh, and finally, the residents of Ferndale. I wa, I wanna thank And finally, the residents of Ferndale, I want to thank you. And I understand that this was an appointment and not an election, but you have supported me at the ballot box many times in the past and I am sure that it is your support and encouragement that helped council make the decision that did and I hope that I have your continued support as we go forward, so I want to thank the residents. Couple, just quick things, I cut my first ribbon as a mayor and I bring that up because it's a very important business, I think, actually a nonprofit. Over on Hilton Avenue, where the Chosen Bookstore used to be, is now the Accounting Aid Society. And if you are a lower or moderate income person who needs free tax service, if you want your taxes done for free and you qualify by their income guidelines, go over to the Accounting Aid Society on Hilton, just north of Nine Mile, and they will do those taxes for you for free. So, I think that's a great service and we're glad to have them in our, in our community. And finally, I just want to mention, we've talked a lot about the budget in the past and we've also talked about this notion that Oakland County does, which is a multi-year budget. And I want to begin to explore whether that makes sense for Ferndale and I'm not offering that as a resolution, but I would like to instruct our city manager, if you would, to come back at the next meeting and just share with me what you think the obstacles could be or what the requirements would be for us as we begin to prepare our budget to make it a two-year budget, which in a sense means you would, and I, like I said before, we do half of this anyway because we project our revenues out for five years, but what it entails is going the next step, which is matching those expenses to those revenues for the next two years out and literally passing a two-year budget at council. So, I want you, I want to just put that on your radar, city manager, and if you could come back at the next meeting and let us know what that might entail, I would appreciate it. Thank you. And if there is no further business to come for the-
We got to move.
Oh, oh, that's right. We have a closed session that's going to follow this meeting. Does somebody here at council like to make a motion to go into closed session, which is appropriate?
I would move to go into closed session for the purpose, for the purposes of a strategy session, oh, that's two S's in a row, connected to the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement and considering attorney-client material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to sections HC and HH respectively of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268.
Is there a support?
Support.
Support by Lennon. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon? Mr. Lennon?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?